Thank you, Madam President and trustees, and all who've joined us tonight, either in person or on our livestream. Just a brief superintendent's report. I know our agenda is lengthy, but there are a few things still remaining to celebrate for the end of the school year. Congrats to Pioneer High School junior Carrie Miller, who recently won first place in the Michigan State Girls Division One Singles Tennis Finals. The Pioneer team overall finished fifth place in the tournament, and Huron finished sixth place. So, congrats to our Pioneers and River Rats. We would also like to recognize the success of Pioneer Men's Track and Field Team at the Michigan State Championships. Here they are. Pioneer Senior Nick Foster claimed first place, both in the 1600 meter and the 3200 meter events. The Men's 4x800 relay team also took first place, with Pioneer Track and Field Team coming in second overall. So, great job. Over the past month, you may not have heard yet, but 10 Huron students have been participating in the Girls Go Cyber Start Online Cyber Security Competition, and they advanced to Nationals last week. Huron sent their four top team members to compete against 120 other teams in a three-day online cyber security capture-the-flag-style competition. The Huron team was the highest-scoring from Michigan and placed overall eighth in the nation. So, good job to those Huron students. Several qualifying crew teams from the Ann Arbor Public Schools recently competed in the SRAA National Championship Regatta. I was out over the weekend and heard a lot about this. They were out at Lake Dillon in southeast Ohio. Congratulations to the Skyline Women's Lightweight Quad for bringing home first place, making this the seventh national championship for Skyline Crew. As a young school with only 10 years going, and seven of those, they've been national champs. So, they rock. And then, secondly, want to recognize two second-place finishes. Skyline Men's Junior Quad and Pioneer Women's Freshman Eight. So, they are up and coming. And then, Huron took fifth place in the Women's Junior Four. Pioneer Science Olympiad Team. And trustees, you recall this group. They are famous. They went to national championships at Cornell University. There they are, out at Cornell. Special congrats to the national champions in forensics, M.J. Renick and Anna Klinger. They earned $1,000 gift from Texas Instruments for Pioneer. Slauson Science Olympiad Team also participated in the national tournament. Here they are. They placed an impressive 14th out of 60 teams in the National Middle School Division. I just want to give another big shout-out to teacher Jeffrey Austin at Skyline High School and the Skyline Writing Center. I saw this on Twitter the other night, retweeted it. We all know how successful writing those college application essays can be. And I was delighted to see this the other night, that their online Writing Center support will be open all summer. So, they will be providing feedback to our students across the district who are working to prepare their college entrance, our college application essays. They will give meaningful feedback to all Ann Arbor students throughout the summer. So, and over and above, kudos out to them. Huron students Vidja Srinivas and Ryan Gudal received recognition at the 2019 National Invention Convention at the Henry Ford in Dearborn. Srinivas won first place in her grade level for her invention, while Gudal came in third place in his grade. To qualify for National Invention Convention, students competed in the inaugural Ann Arbor Public Schools Invention Convention, and then they advanced from the 2019 Michigan Invention Convention. Kevin Carr, PK-12 International Baccalaureate Facilitator, along with fellow IB administrators and our IB team, hosted a visit from Ann Arbor Ypsilanti Chamber of Commerce Leadership Group. This is their community leadership group. They typically visit us in the spring. Trustees, on one of our busiest weeks, they came on May 31st, right after Memorial Day. The group learned and experienced firsthand the full continuum of IB education offered at Mitchell, Scarlet, and Huron High Schools. They visited classrooms, and you can see some photos here. They were very impressed. I receive positive feedback and emails from our leaders around the Chamber of Commerce Group. Huron High School Symphony Band, directed by Robert Ash, has been selected to perform at the Michigan Music Conference in January of 2020. That may sound like not such a big deal, folks, but it is actually a huge honor, extended to only nine school ensembles per year by the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association. I want to congratulate Huron Symphony Band and Director Mr. Robert Ash for their excellence, and applaud all their hard work, all the hard work of our music educators. We've just finished a season of concerts and graduations, and so impressive, all of our music and arts groups. So, I just want to give a shout-out to those teachers who, year after year, continue to inspire excellence in our student musicians and our students in their performing arts programs. On Sunday, June 2nd, Ann Arbor Spark kicked off its series of tech-focused events. You may have been out around Tech Trek last Friday. Last Sunday, it was called A2 Tech 360, and it was the first-ever student demo day. And I just really appreciate the work of our partnership coordinator Nancy Shore, who had a hand in getting this all set up. The demo day was held at the Neutral Zone, and it featured 10 innovative student projects, products, and inventions from AAPS High School and Middle School students. And I understand that on Friday, June 7th, last Friday, happened to be downtown during part of this event, the Ann Arbor Public Schools was on display at Menlo Innovations for our annual Ann Arbor Tech Trek. It was just a great event with more than 600 people down there who enjoyed interacting with robotics teams. Our teams from Skyline, Pioneer, Community, Abbott Elementary, Huron High School, CP students, were all volunteering at Tech Trek, and they even got a chance to chat personally and interact with a friend of the Ann Arbor Public Schools and Menlo Innovation CEO, Rich Sheridan. Rich Sheridan, who's a great friend of the district and supporter. There he is there. In April and May, Ann Arbor Public Schools welcomed companies to speak to our students during lunch and learn events. I really do appreciate Ms. Shore's work in broadening this program so that we have many lunch and learn events across our high schools for students to participate in. This year, I want to especially note Skyline Huron Pathways and Community, who sponsored Career Exploration Speaker Series, and also at Pioneer High School. So, the panels included representatives from Saveco Hospitality, Atomic Object, Thomson Reuters, Smith Group, U of M I T S, and the New Foundry. We never take it for granted when folks, professionals, take time away from their offices to be in our schools to help our students think about their futures. So, I just want to thank all of our partners and businesses. We're extremely grateful for all of the panelists who attended and look forward to continuing these events throughout next year. Well, for some folks, it may be hard to believe. For those of you all in schools every day, you know it's about that time. We're just here, down to the last two days of classes in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. We do recognize, and several of our speakers have shared it this evening, you couldn't be more right on. It takes a community working together to produce successful students. And I want to acknowledge and thank everyone who contributes every day to making our school district an exceptional place for teaching and learning. Certainly, we have challenges facing us. And this evening, trustees, you'll be confronting several of those in the context of our annual budget. Our students, we so appreciate. They work hard to learn and bring all that they can every day with us. We appreciate all of our staff, teachers, support staff, and leaders, who work hard every day, each and every day, on the front lines to deliver to our students and their families. We appreciate our parents, who do their part at home to bring us the very best students that they can to school every day. They provide support and encouragement throughout our system. I appreciate the Board of Education trustees, who are always faced with extremely difficult and impossible decisions. And I appreciate the thousands of hours that you devote to district oversight and guidance. We're very grateful for our community members. We're fortunate to live in an Ann Arbor community that values quality education and supports public education. And I want to thank our community members for their engagement every day. So, we just appreciate, and best wishes to all for a successful summer 2019. I always say to students on their way out the door, "We will miss you every single day." And at our meeting next week, trustees, you know, we'll set the countdown clock because we'll be on the run with facilities, with business, with operations, with materials, with programming, to be prepared. We also give a big shout-out to our Rec and Ed team because as many of our classrooms are powering down, they are powering up. And the last report I had about 24 hours ago is right at 5,000, just under 5,000 registrations for summer camps this summer. I do want to encourage everyone out there that there are a few slots still open, so don't get discouraged. If you've been busy and neglected to get your child signed up, there are a few places still open. We'll look forward to being over at Safety Town and seeing our hundreds of students who get through all of that programming. And in addition, our academic summer programs, such as Summer Literacy Institute, our summer school programming at high school. I could go on and on down the list. Our partnership with U of M in Scarlet and Mitchell. We have so much going on here in the summer. When folks say, "Why don't you get year-round school?" I almost want to say, "We actually have year-round school" because we have well over 1,000 students engaged every day throughout this summer. It has been just a rewarding two weeks to be out almost every night in graduations. We take very seriously that handshake that seals the deal in how we send our students out into the world. And we're so proud that in Ann Arbor, the high school diploma means something. And I want everyone to know that just seeing the joy on the faces of students and their families, realizing the handshakes and the hugs, it makes it all worthwhile. Trustees, 1,355 hands that were shaken and hugs that were given, and we are a wrap on graduation season. Now, trustees, we saved a special treat for you. I know it's a lengthy agenda, but I promise you, you will appreciate. First, a graduation commemoration. And then, against his better judgment, I asked Mr. Clulie to go ahead and debut the end-of-the-year video. And it's kind of our pact that we save that for tomorrow. But I just felt like tonight was a great night to preview it. So, we'll have to just raise our right hands and solemnly swear not to let the secret out of the bag to anybody else because we'll send that out tomorrow as our very best wishes to everybody in the system and our gratitude for a wonderful 2018-19 school year. So, it is always an honor to serve as the superintendent of schools in Ann Arbor Public Schools. And I thank you all for your support. And Mr. Clulie, it's over to you now.
I want to say thank you, Nineteens, because it's kids like you and the things that you are going to do when you leave Pioneer that keep us pumped.
To our parents, thank you for supporting us, keeping us motivated to go to school, and pulling us out of the bed every morning.
This is not the end. This is only the beginning. And rough starts make for the greatest endings. And I can't wait to read your stories.
The amount of compassion and kindness other students showed me despite having just met me helped me realize I was in the right place.
Community has given me a home where I can grow and thrive without fear of judgment.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you to my parents because without them, I definitely would not be where I am today.
And now, real quickly, the one we're all keeping under our hat till tomorrow.
I'm going to show you a video here that explains why you were chosen. So, I want you to watch it and just react.
Giving every student a voice so everyone can ask questions, and then they can explore their own questions, the things that they're most interested in. And also making sure to seek out those students that maybe aren't as engaged, and talking to them, and trying to figure out what their interests are and how that can relate back to what we're studying. Oh.
Ms. Warner, who is my biology teacher, AP Environmental Science teacher, she really challenged me to do the best I could do. And the amount of work she put into making sure that we were doing the best that we could do, and how much effort she would put into her lessons. And it was something that I was just, you know, "I'm going to do as much as I can because she's doing as much as she can."
How wonderful. Thank you. It's wonderful when students recognize what you're doing, that you do care so much and that you do put so much of yourself into what you do. Hopefully, because I put so much into what I do, I can reach most of them, if not all of them.
So, the nice thing about science is that I do group work. So, then, I can strategically kind of group kids that I know that might need the extra help. And I pair them up with students that will help them to get them excited with science. Students know when their teacher's invested into the curriculum. So, when they do something well, we get excited. And when I even was launching the biota rockets, we all would get excited. I would get just as excited as they would. And so, they knew that I was very excited with their success and even their failure.
I want you to watch it and just react.
In middle school, my favorite teacher was Ms. Morningstar. What she did for me is sign me up for my very first science fair, my first Washington Science Fair. And from then, I've done the science fair every year. And this year, I finally went to the Intel International Science Fair because of her. So, she inspired me not only to work really hard in school. Her tests were always so hard, but I got like an A+ in her class. She's so passionate about teaching, and she's so excited about what she does that it makes everybody love science, too. And through her, I got so many opportunities that I would have never gotten.
I'm very honored. I watched her grow, just to see her excited about science and knowing that I was a small part of it is very, very exciting. And I'm going to her graduation party.
I think the most important thing with students that maybe are not inclined to be as involved in the curriculum or engaged, if you will, is getting to know them and building the personal relationship with them. And at a school that's big like Pioneer, it's really, really important to try to make small communities. I feel like my enthusiasm, in some ways, is elevated at this time of the year because personally, I get attached to the kids and I miss them when they leave. And so, I try to cherish these last couple of weeks together. Of course.
One person who's really stood out to me has been Mr. Richards. He's really had a great impact. You can tell he's always happy to help, and he's always doing whatever he can to like make our lives better. And during passing times, he's always standing outside his door. He wants to engage with the students there. He wants to talk to you. If I'm ever having a problem, if I'm ever having a bad day, he's someone I can go to, he's someone I can share that with, and he will make it better. He will do whatever he can, even if it's like out of his hands. He'll at least like try to do whatever he can to improve it because he genuinely cares about us.
Thanks, Yaseen. That was wonderful. It means a lot. I've worked with Yaseen since his freshman year. I've known the Bakush family for quite a while, but Yaseen is one of my favorites, and I'll miss him a lot.
Well, I spend a lot of time at the beginning just building that community in the classroom. You need to have all the students feeling like they are a part of it, that they can take risk if they need to, that you will support them, that you will not have others saying negative things about whatever they have to say. So, the time I put in at the beginning to build that community always pays off.
I want to highlight Ms. Wade. She is retiring this year, but I had her this year for African-American communities. And her classroom was such a safe space and open space to speak your mind. And the topic of African-American communities, the things that we study, we don't really see much in other social studies classes. So, it gives me lots of passion and hope that will drive my moving forward. She always taught us to fight for what we want with love and not with hate because we love ourselves as African-Americans, we love other African-Americans, and just to move forward with light.
Can I get a copy of that? That is so nice. And she picked up my passion. I am very passionate about teaching and making it a safe space and hoping students to really try to get to their best potential. She said what it is I want a classroom to be. She said it. And if they come in that way, or leave that way, that's all I ask. You can Google the material. But if you can become a person who is caring and passionate and works hard at whatever they do, that's all I ask from my students.
I'm constantly making sure all the kids are engaged by nonverbal communication and musically, just making sure that we're all constantly communicating. And then, I also am always communicating with their parents outside of school.
Mrs. Gerald, she came in my seventh grade year. And to be honest, I wanted to leave band. And she took the time with us, almost individually. And it changed my life because it's like, hey, I love music, and music is a gift to me. And she makes music so fun.
I try to make sure that all students feel successful in band so that their confidence goes up and that they feel better about themselves so that hopefully, it allows them to experience some success in other classes, too. That's a good question.
That was really good.
Oh, no, dude! Congratulations, congratulations!
Yes, yes, hello, hi. We were your first jazz band. And you kept us so engaged, not even in the jazz, but even in the band class. And that made us successful going out. I have to thank you for everything that you have done. Yes, oh my goodness.
You're like three feet taller now.
I was down here in Maryland, so I was, yeah. I was, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Day goes by a lot faster. It's more enjoyable because the students are learning by doing. There's many days where the store may do well, other days not as well. And we sit down and we talk about it. Why didn't we sell as much today? Or maybe we made too many cookies and too much popcorn, and we purchased too many items. So, the managers get some real good hands-on learning in terms of how to run a small convenience store.
One that really stands out is Mr. Scott Hunter, the marketing teacher. I kind of could tell he was passionate about what he was teaching. He wasn't just teaching, but just because he knew the stuff. He was passionate about the business world. And I was glad to take his class because he introduced me to the business world. And I plan to go to Madonna University, play football there, and major in accounting. And I think he has a big deal to do with that because had he not have been an influential business teacher on me, then I probably wouldn't have even been interested in the business side.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, he's been good. He's been real good. It touches my heart. I mean, to hear that is, it kind of reminds you why you got into teaching, and that was awesome. So, yeah, Son, he's a good kid, and I really enjoyed having him in class. And that's why we do this, you know, really truly is.
So, when they come in the door, one of the first things we do is we tell them, "Everyone's unique, everyone has a gift, and everyone has the ability to learn. We just need to find the right way to reach them." We always start with kind of a hook and then work backwards to then slip in the physics and academic as they need it while they're building and learning. For example, today, we actually had everyone tear down their robot. Many of these students walked in the door saying, "I can't build a robot. There's no way." And yet, today, we're celebrating that success, which is actually really gratifying for me.
Ms. Garber in Engineering Physics was kind of a hard class, but some of the time, I'd be ahead. So, she'd keep pushing me to go more ahead and put extra things in my robot and program it to do other things. I like to thank her for doing that because it showed me that I can do more than what I thought I could do.
Aw, you're making me cry.
Aurora was one who probably was not looking forward to physics, and I knew it. But she poured her heart into it, and everything I asked her to do, she did above and beyond. And she was just a really great student. And she's exactly the type of student that I'm talking about where we say we celebrate successes.
That's so unfair.
On behalf of our 18,500 students, thank you AAPS team for a successful A2 Engage 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Warner, for everything you've done for me.
Thank you, Ms. Morningstar. You're the best.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Thank you, Ms. Garber.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.